Welcome, everyone, to the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for January 28, 2020. Let's stand and do the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the
Take a moment. We've lost John 2020 Gading Committee. He was also a Scout Master for the Dobbs Ferry Boy Scout troop number 24. She died on January 23rd of this year. Very We all have a day for her. We proclaimed that day Just to My kids, who are now grownups, were her librarians. I remember her. Was librarian for 47 years. She visited the students at Springhurst library tours for children and encouraged them That's so Sunny And she was a huge Disney and Comic Con fan. So we'll just have a moment of silence for these two very present. I'd appreciate that. Are the Consider the application of 115 broad This is the second night. So I don't need a Can I have a motion to open the meeting? Now officially open. So welcome. I know. I appreciate you guys coming down again. Some of us did visit the park The parking lot?
I went on my own.
You went on your own yesterday?
Had it to do make it yesterday.
Trustee Taylor will not be here today. He lot and trustee Sullivan will be late and I don't think she's had the opportunity to see the park. We can talk about that later. Do you have you'd like to
The mayor mentioned this application began approximately a year ago. We were on referral parking spaces. We additional decrease of figure. Existing parking demand and we had several impacts to the property including illegally parked vehicles, impacts of traffic, pedestrian safety and the like on the property and that's where this application has come forward. We, prior to making these submissions to the board, did look at other alternatives that would Westchester County ride share promote carpooling and other biking options. They weren't enough to satisfy that's what we're seeing this evening. Further, the Apple's track consultant looked at several alternatives I mentioned. These service, the existing proposal, I will ask Ralph to touch specifically on how much more is approximately 3,000 square feet more to provide not even the This is the reason that the applicant is seeking this is it's necessary to allow for pedestrian safety and circulation on the site and provide sufficient parking demand.
Sorry, Liz.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Some of what I'm going to say, I had said, I presented to the Land Board, operating and you've met the other members with us this evening, Bonnie Burke, who's sitting here in front, is Chief Operator. I want to share with St. Francis Cabrini, bought the property in discussion in 1914, not 2014. In order to establish an orphanage. We all like to say that she had a really great eye for real estate. Over the years, the orphanage became a school and then an academy and has been under the sponsorship of Mission of Sisters of the Sacred Heart, the Order of Sisters of Mother Cabrini founded. last week, Mr. Hyder reminded the village board that of trustees that Cabrini doesn't pay taxes and it might then he might be a burden to the village and my point There has been a question of we believe that we are to keep our residents. We have investigated multiple different areas on our property and you were heard about those in the Nida and I know that Ralph will address some of the issues again tonight, but we building to the south of that because it was the only site that made sense. The other sites were either too close to public view, too We spent within $70,000 as well requests. Some people if that were true, it would still be unclear to me how that to build. However, it's not true and as many of you know, Cabrini people and I won't repeat that I've already spoken about, but it goes on today. We also employ villagers We try to leave ourselves available to home employees, residents, volunteers, students and business restaurants, service stations, grocery stores and other businesses. We used to be on Cedar Street. I just checked in. It was 11,000. Shows that Bill is probably Cabrini Emergency Services, which is sponsored by us. Cabrini Dobbs Ferry provides actual programs for the children of the village's elementary you know, we are part of the village. We would like to be available super temperature actually is not built on because they are under the river of Jackson. So thank you for your time and attention.
Senior project manager with the firm of Providence Design Engineering. This is our analysis of lighting pattern. Mention where we investigated that and what we're with the exception of making our two lights for security purposes. The reason for 6:00 AM is
to rub to but
This is the new lighting for this particular for this park
It's the last
Am I correct?
So the light pattern of this pattern, so the light distribution is downward a little bit for the most part. It's still particular Eastern poles sitting along property line are there 12. Want to tech today. I just think maybe I'll send you questions. I'm happy to
Questions at And just for the indicator that you chose this site as opposed to the other sites very, very quickly
Sure. I'll have to let me open up the alternative.
Do you want to say it again?
Just while Ralph is pulling out of his speakers. This board indicating that they wouldn't be able to have that shared parking is not had. mitigate and reduce the need for additional parking.
Because that seemed to make the most sense. When you're standing there, you have St. Christopher's right there, their parking lot is right there. Then they, I guess legally maybe cannot do it because of the type of facility they are.
That was there as I mentioned I know I misquoted it, but I did send a letter to this board.
Kind of a deal or have a shuttle between them. I don't like Sacred Heart has 30 something spaces.
Just a curiosity that I have and I was, of course, there last night. How do on for you to determine the need of 25 spaces?
So we did two things. One was to actually my letter making this mission here was a parking study that we conducted. That analysis showed that there was a peak, the green sheet power was a deficit of 15 parking spaces on site. five percent on top of the total parking. So in other words, we take the 205 parked vehicles, which was the amount available plus the deficit and add 5% to that as a design push into that. Secondly, what we had done is we had a aerial image taken and we went out and photographed the site over the period, the peak hour period. This is a parking lot, which is empty parking. This is where the most vehicles were shown to be parked out looking at the north parking lot. There are five, by the same token, there are five cars parked legally circle, which is actually parked in the right area and that spaces. So we're using on the loss of providing an emergency access road or an access connection to the access and As we noted previously, that sprinkler system So what we did was reconfigured it mean parallel so that they're outside.
Very quickly, especially go through them very quickly.
I mentioned previously, there's a area adjacent to so that material would have to special attention to that and special construction as well as a routine. And we had a net of seven There was some discussion that why can't we go further back here and the reason put on that existence speed flow most of the time. So the location of the was that second alternative discussed was the one in the building. Again, this is the one that requires was the area. this was complicated situation is because there's the existing train five power supply to the building is have to be structurally reinforced because we with the they are, they have to be aligned and work. Vehicle and that's where the additional cost of 100 One of the major concerns here was the walking distance to the employee entrance. The purpose of the additional 25 spaces and see parking spaces, cars that will park with you. Secondly, this area, this area right So it is probable that when constructing this in this area, it will probably get rocked during construction. The 60 inch storm drain, which collects water from Route 9A and passes it down to the river, would also
One site as opposed to another site. And my notes indicate that trustee Taylor, who's not here tonight, had asked you guys to
the park, including one of those extraordinary cost items that I had mentioned, would be would be over 800,000.
To tent that parking space, which is used
No, actually on those, on the proposed parking area, I worked out
than the price of the yellow lots?
I'm sorry.
I'm just trying to figure out, we comparing apples to apples here. When you give
Things like that. On the others, we do a 25% contingency on top of the cost that we estimated and the reason for that is to account for
Is the 200K included contingency?
15%.
And engineering?
The engineering cost is not in that. That would be the cost of the $70,000 that Ms. Johnson invested earlier. That is not included in that number. And you were mentioning about $10,000 for parking space. And you know, one other 10,000 square feet of additional impervious area. The total impervious area of all of the alternatives different approximately 10,000 square feet of additional impervious. Now, the reason for that is because when you take into consideration these have to have one of them and that's where the additional, the net additional square foot it comes
Why you don't think possible to use the more impervious, more
In the New York State PEC Small Water Management Manual, is Ralph recommended and the reason for that areas just this small area in here would be available. One of the things you have to consider for the store is of ground or soil, ground materials. This Water Management Manual of not like pick up, you know, your debris or whatever from what was of course pavement areas, they is not Substantially because there aren't too many companies that have vacuum facilities.
Has been green or has it been used and then we
that was constructed for the access the second one is right here and it's marginal as to whether or not it's going degrade from them so that we're and the reason for that is we place the footer to I don't have a rendering of it.
Yeah, I Did you, I looked through the letter, maybe I missed it, but how did you determine that there is a But if you've already went over this, I apologize.
What's that?
I came late, so if you already went over this, I apologize.
As I said, we conducted a As I said, we conducted a. Outside of parking spaces, that's only. As a.
On street parking, um, do you know if any of those cars.
Five parking spaces that we recommend is. There's.
Only from.
It's not fifteen, it's twenty-five.
No, you're, you're just not.
We pay. Push it.
Only there from three thirty to four thirty.
Oh, no, they were.
Into five one one share. Right here. Right, prefer to drive or take the train obviously you want.
And you know, the. Ralph say. Many of our staff members. To be. Edition, they can't make their, their assignment until they replace. There, so it's not as if they leave and they give up their parking spot in the next.
What? Because, but they're also. Can give.
They have. Yeah, and if you had to pick me up every morning and bring me home every afternoon, we would have conflicts because we have wives, you know, so that's really the issue.
So how many employees do you have on each shift then total?
On each shift or a total number of employees?
I think it's per shift.
We would have to work that out for that after she leaves, you know.
Well, there are numbers within the parking survey that.
Where's that?
So I see you distributed 425. What is, why 425? Is that how many people there are, employees?
And somebody's, they were basically distributed, they did not get returned, but that's how many were distributed.
To the employees.
Members, but that's.
So how many actual employees do you have overall on the facility?
Employees?
Yes.
And how many, how many spaces are required by the village for operation?
These days.
So the village code does not set a standard of parking for.
For.
I want to share something that I shared with the planning board in regard to the number of spaces. I did a little bit of research. In Hades, the zoning for hospitals and nursing homes calls for one spot for every two beds plus. And other practitioners. So applied to Cabrini and only counting day shift employees, that would result in 304 required spaces for Cabrini. And actually, we have 198. It's. Only in the day shift, the formula would result in a required 304 parking spaces for Cabrini. We have 100. The requirement, which is based on gross floor area for healthcare facilities, would result in a requirement of 550. Spaces. Cabrini has 190 who are asking to go to 216. So it would seem as if. The village, that they took into consideration the fact that there are peak hours, there are visitors, and visitors who peak hours, et cetera.
What time is the, the day shift?
Hours for biggest department is nursing and those hours are seven to three, three. Departments again can be, and some can stagger and come a little bit earlier, some could come at eight, and then we have the standard. With the others scattered, but the largest department is.
Okay.
Those are already considered in this, so not every employee is driving a vehicle or is a ride share. There are others that still take public transit. Please the.
But he raised. Assessment of how employees actually commute.
So survey that we did, we'll sort of composite all of these things, so I don't know, I don't exactly. Why parking areas located where it is is for those employees that are coming. Whole like this evaluation actually help.
When you did. Know if those were actually employees or if they were visitors or something else? Vehicles, were they visitors, were they?
So the, so the aerial. Of the vehicle. And I put for the record, it was exhibit D to your packet. To share, let alone second. Quote at the New York State. This is the agent. Proposed. If there's available. It's like not putting a bathroom in a public park. Kind of know.
I'm mayor, trustee. To speak.
And your ad, your name and your address?
My mother. Friends of my father own Jimmy's Restaurant in Dobbs Ferry for over. Me for 20 years and unfortunately in June of. And then. Home, my mom to stay, and we decided. Stay at Cabrini and to this day, blessed accepted my mom and she's been there since June of 2000. I feel that. So I do go often, I almost go every single. They wonderful doctors and nurses and aides that have taken care of my mom. Aides, she has a voice and she's been on, she's been offered and is on many community, uh, committees there. She. Friends. Beautiful. Ever been. But the. Go on. On the water Hudson River and the bridge and all the porches like. Transition my mom there, you sit on the porch and at lunch and there just be. Like I say, if I had, we've had such a positive experience. She did have. Family members. Mine from Metta St. Gerini and you know, again, with the parking issue, I do find at certain peak, peak times, you might have to go around a couple of times to get. But I do tend to find a parking space and I really love the facility, so I highly recommend it.
Hi, my name is Candice Lee. I wasn't going to come up here tonight, but I agree with her totally. I live to 200 Beacon Hill. I also recommend a place to anybody. I had my grandmother there for three years, 2010 to 13. She passed away at three and a half.
Oh, my God.
They took excellent care of her when she was there. My mother is currently there. She's been there for eight years. She's very. She's absolutely right. They take excellent care of my mother. On the other hand, is a very difficult person, so they had their.
Your mom.
Hi, mom. E-receptionist, e-receptionist there is what I call myself. I can truly speak about the parking spaces because I'm a complaint department also when it comes to the spaces. I'm the first person, equal say, I meet, I agree. I agree with the times that it's hard, but starts at 11 o'clock in the morning. My complaints start at 11 o'clock in the morning. My desk, I can see all the parking lots. I do see that there are people parked in the fire lanes. We try very hard to work for. Resources, I work for her, I'm not human resources, I'm front desk again, but um, it's very difficult. We truly, truly need more spots. They start parking, they wait about six o'clock. I also get complaints that they can't find parking space on Broadway after I sent them up there because of the fact that they have to park, as they say in Hastings. A lot of our family members and visitors are elderly. So I put it to my desk so they can sit down when they come there. It's really disturbing. It's sad, but for such a beautiful place, I can understand everything, I can understand all of this with parking spaces, but putting those 25 spaces there would be awesome. As they said, it's also giving us an extra access out if we need an emergency access exit out. We have had things happen that we couldn't get out, like all the construction that we went through on Broadway recently, and they wouldn't let us out of our driveway. That's not an emergency, but if we had one, we do need to get out of there somehow. I. Wonderful. If you've ever.
Thank you.
Sorry for me, so you know how she is. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead. By the way, no one's denying the quality of care at Cabrini, we're just talking about the parking lot, that's all.
I would like to reiterate that too. My mother was there, my mother-in-law was there. I have tremendous, tremendous respect for Cabrini and the work that they do because I have seen it firsthand. So again, there's no issues with that whatsoever.
But the three, it is the three to, the three to, seven to three, three to eleven, because there's a six to two, seven to three, three to eleven, and eleven is seven. You also have eight to four and nine to five that was thrown in there also. And I would say by 11 o'clock, it's full. By nine o'clock in the morning, our employee enter, our employee parking lot is completely full and I can see it.
Okay.
Because again, I will argue with them because they come to me and say, oh, no, I have to park over here.
Thanks.
I um. Hi, I'm Sue Galloway. I live at 122 Judson Avenue, Dobbs Ferry, and I'm also on the conservation advisory board. And first of all, I want to say thank you for what you guys do and I think it's like very valuable for our community. My dad broke his neck this fall, so I understand what a skilled person can do and how important that is. Um, I'm going to read the letter that the conservation advisory board is submitting to the board of trustees tonight though. Um, and it is as follows. Um, we'd like to notify the board of trustees, we support the planning board's decision to deny the site plan application by Cabrini to build a parking lot. The Cabrini property is on the Dobbs Ferry open space in Victoria. We examined the environmental and aesthetic impacts of the parking lot. The proposed parking lot is in a critical environmental area as designated by Westchester County. The plan as proposed appears to impact significant trees and reduces green space on the property. The location is near the Hudson River corridor and an increase in impervious surface in this area should not be encouraged. The site is located at a gateway to Dobbs Ferry and the visual impact of more parking lots and less green space significantly alters the experience of entering or leaving the village. Plans for development on land, including parking lots, should avoid impacting natural resources on the property and protect views of the Hudson River and the Greenbelt. Thank you.
Thanks. Are you going to submit that letter to us today?
I'm sure right now.
Yes. You can.
I think the traffic committee submitted something as well.
Give it to Sean. Thank you. Anyone else? Did you write it down?
I did.
Steve Billy, 22 Elm Street. And um, I, since Kathy Dean was unable to, excuse me, make it tonight on behalf of the tree consortium, I'm going to make an expression of concern and the endorsement of the tree consortium of the planning board's decision. We all have. The institutions, St. Chris Mercy College, as the parking requirements of in zoning codes that red demonstrate, they tend to outgrow their properties. And that's what's happened and it's puts pressure on being inventive about how to survive as an institution. But um, it's a delicate balancing act of the, of the site impacts and the impacts on the rest of the village. We lost the green score on the Psalm Parkway. This is an important piece of, it was considered carefully by the planning board. And um, so then you're not being asked to, and they came out the way they came out. And I think that is unfortunately the right way to come out on this and life will go on. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, I'm Lorraine Campanelli, I live at 269 Broadway, and I've been a resident of Dobbs Ferry for about 12 years, and I'm also an employee of Cabrini of Westchester. I started in 2002 in our adult day sector and prior to that I had been a social worker.
why I think the question I have about the picture and the rendering would be helpful because, I mean, it's hard to really envision what you're talking about and proposing in a blueprint.
And one of our submissions, which Ralph just brought up on the board here, is just that, it's a visual representation of passerby on Broadway, what they're seeing looking over tall vehicles. We're talking about
I meant a rendering. I mean, say that, like
Even more than a rendering, we've seen, yeah, lately, we've seen other projects that have come before, the various boards, a 3D, and I know it's kind of expensive, but I think it would be very helpful if you can provide us with a 3D imaging of the parking lot from the street, just so we can look at what you, we get a better sense of it. I know two of the trustees would like an opportunity to go and see the site. And we would like a 3D rendering. And we would like, I think, Mr. Trustee Duraz, you had an information that you would like a total listing of the number of employees per shift, I think you wanted. So if we can provide that.
Or alternatively, if there's a possibility of not doing it at all and not even spending money on 3D, then you're not spending money on 3D because there's another opportunity.
And we have, if we're going to address that, or in particular to now another off-site or other location, whether that's permissive in the zoning code is another, I guess, another question that will have to be explored because typically onsite is a requirement versus an off-site parking oftentimes will not be permissive, but we'll certainly explore that consideration. And we have, of course, as we mentioned, discussed that with our neighbors.
And it's not necessarily parking in other places, but employee incentives to, you know, and reserve spots for certain people, like the other things that could be done that don't require a $200,000 investment that would make, you know, everybody happy.
And I believe you received the note at the Planning Board from the Traffic Committee, and they gave you various organizations besides 511 Share that you could call to get some information on it.
Yes.
So I just had a question, things that came up in the public comments that triggered some thoughts for me. Did, is there anything that happened in your renovations or in these additional programs that have been added that have created a, maybe patient's not the right word, but patient increase as required, increase in staffing or some, something else that's driving this need?
You know, I can't help but be frustrated. You just answered all of these questions for the
I know, but she just said that there was a, well, we're a different board and we, I, she just said that there was like a new adult program for okay, I'm asking the question. That's why I'm asking for the information while you're here in front of us.
The adult program opened 15 years ago. And now it's closed. If anything, we have, we have laid off staff. We have not added staff. And we laid off staff because of our decreasing revenue. And our decreasing revenue has caused us to make decisions to do capital expenditures, not operational expenditures. We can do fundraising for capital expenditures. We can get grants for capital expenditures. It's almost impossible to get grants for operational expenses. We have looked at Conseil, no, at Valet, Valet Parking. Obviously, we can charge our employees or our visitors for Valet Parking. That will be expense that we will need to carry into the future for as long as we're there. It's, it's not going to go away. It's going to be an operational cost. The same with incentivizing, incentivizing employees by paying them not to take their cars to work. It's going to be an ongoing expense. Most of them are in union contracts, so I can assure you, there will be an ongoing expense if that were to happen. Parking off-site, we have looked at. Any parking off-site requires all of the things that are returning to shared review. It also requires having a driver and a van who is available to do those shift pickups, drop-offs, visitor pickups, drop-offs, et cetera. It's an ongoing expense over time. So by kicking the can down the road does not solve our problem. That's my response.
Okay. So I think trustee Sullivan, you will not be here at the next meeting. So I'd like to adjourn it to two weeks, I mean, the two meetings from this time,
Have come before the various boards, a 3D, and I know it's kind of expensive, but I think it would be very helpful if you can provide us with a 3D imaging of the parking lot from the street, just so we can look at what you, we get a better sense of it. I know two of the trustees would like an opportunity to go and see the site, and we would like a 3D rendering, and we would like, I think, Mr. Trustee Durazi, you had information that you would like a total listing of the number of employees per shift, I think you wanted, so if we could provide that.
Or alternatively, if there's a possibility of not doing it at all, and not even spending money on 3D, then you're not spending money on 3D, because there's another opportunity.
And we have, if we're going to address that, or in particular to now another off-site or other location, whether that's permissive in the zoning code is another, I guess another question that will have to be explored, because typically onsite is a requirement versus an off-site parking, often times will not be permissive, but we'll certainly explore that consideration. And we have, of course, as we mentioned, discussed that with our neighbors.
And it's not necessarily parking in other places, but employee incentives to, you know, and reserve spots for certain people, like the other things that could be done that don't require a $200,000 investment that would make, you know, everybody happy.
And I believe you received the note at the planning board from the traffic committee, and they gave you various organizations besides 511 Share that you could call to get some information on.
Yes.
So I just had a question, things that came up in the public comments that triggered some thoughts for me, did, is there anything that happened in your renovations, or in these additional programs that have been added, that have created a, maybe patient's not the right word, but patient increase, that's required increase in staffing, or something else that's driving this need?
You know, I can't help but be frustrated, you just answered all of these questions for the panel.
I know, but she just said that there was a, well, we're a different board, and we, I, she just said that there was like a new adult program for, okay, I'm asking the question, that's why I'm asking for the information while you're here in front of us.
The adult program opened 15 years ago, and now it's closed. If anything, we have, we have laid off staff, we have not added staff, and we laid off staff because of our decreasing revenue, and our decreasing revenue has caused us to make decisions to do capital expenditures, not operational expenditures. We can do fundraising for capital expenditures, we can get grants for capital expenditures. It's almost impossible to get grants for operational expenses. We have looked at concierge, no, at valet, valet parking. Obviously, we can't charge our employees or our visitors for valet parking. That will be expense that we will need to carry into the future for as long as we're there. It's, it's not going to go away, it's going to be an operational cost. The same with incentivizing, incentivizing employees by paying them not to take their cars to work, it's going to be an ongoing expense. Most of them are in union contracts, so I can assure you, there will be an ongoing expense if that were to happen. Parking off-site, we have looked at. Any parking off-site requires all of the things that are returning to shared review. It also requires having a driver and a van who is available to do those shift pickups, drop-offs, visitor pickups, drop-offs, et cetera. It's an ongoing expense over time. So by kicking the can down the road does not solve our problem. That's my response.
Okay. So, I think, Trustee Sullivan, you will not be here at the next meeting, so I'd like to adjourn it to two weeks, I mean, the two meetings from this term, that would be February 25th.
Twenty-fifth.
Okay? So, I will do that. We will adjourn this public hearing until February 25th at 6:30, or as soon thereafter as.
As soon thereafter as the matter may matter.
Right.
We appreciate all your time, and we are prepared to provide those responses, and we're going to appreciate all the public comments this evening, those for the project and providing additional details. And certainly, if there are members that want to come out of the site or have a specific layout, probably isn't still laid out, but they take.
Can you keep that out there?
Yeah, you can keep it out there, because then we can usually go by and look at it, yeah.
Maybe they could arrange something with you. There are at least two other trustees, maybe three, that would like to do that, okay?
To arrange for additional.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine, just coordinate time with the parking lot.
Okay, great. We appreciate everything that you've done. I know it's a drawn-out process from your perspective, but we want to make sure we get it right, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nobody wants to stay for air conditioners.
I think that we're going to go now.
Okay, I'd like to take a motion to open the public hearing for the purpose of considering enactment of an introductory law, local law, which proposes to establish minimum standards for the safe installation of window air conditioning units for the protection of the public and property. Is there a motion? Deputy Mayor Casal?
I can, sure.
Second, Trustee Sullivan, all in favor. Public meeting is open. Is there anyone here to speak about it, or maybe, Laura Lee, you could speak about it?
Sure, I can give you just a brief introduction, and Trustee Sullivan can chime in as well. This resulted from a code committee meeting and a suggestion by the building inspector. There is concern that air conditioning units have been installed in an unsafe manner, and this, you know, you often see bricks under things, and he said sometimes phone books, I didn't know they existed anymore, he sees them stuffed under them to keep them in place. So, we would like to bring this forward, so there would be minimum standards, and they're really based upon the manufacturer's recommended hardware and installation instructions that come for a particular unit. So this provides the opportunity for code enforcement officers to actually enforce a minimum set of standards. If you're going to use a brick, the brick must be secured independently, you know, those kinds of provisions. You would want a brick to come down from a third or fourth, third or fourth story window and smash through a car, so this is, this is the impetus, and we talked about it, provided a draft. I worked with the building inspector, and you had it before.
Is there anything you want to add, Trustee Sullivan?
No, I feel like I have to, but yes.
No, you don't have to.
There is, no. It's a, it would be a new, a new law, and it's not intended to like punish anyone or create, like any additional money. I mean, the first, I think the first violation would simply be a warning to the homeowners, or the renters, whoever has installed the air conditioner, but it really came out of a safety consideration for not just cars, but passerby's, especially in the downtown area, so that's the impetus for it.
Yeah, when I first.
The genesis of it was Ed and I were looking at the window on Main Street, and from my office, and there was this air conditioner listing after one of the storms, and it was just like really, he went up and he told them to, you know, get it out of the window, but that was the genesis. And then we looked at other places, and there's a whole bunch of them that they just like sort of shove it in, and they're held up by tape.
Right.
So, it really is a safety issue.
Is there anybody here who wants to speak about it? Okay, so I.
Yeah.
And we know, it's a warning first, and then we would have to establish what the fines are, or?
The fines would be included in the, your general fine provision.
Got it.
Yeah, if there isn't a fine specifically indicated, you have a general fine provision, which permits up to a certain dollar amount for the first offense, et cetera, et cetera.
You know, when I first heard this, my first reaction was, oh my God, we're getting so litigious. It's like everything, you know, we've got codes for, which is a good, I'm not saying it's a bad thing, but I just want to make sure that it doesn't really get out of hand, that we don't have people traveling the streets, going around people's private properties, and looking at air conditioners. So they would only be, if it looked dangerous, or the, because we're talking about the braces and stuff, that would only be for certain size air conditioner, or is that for every air conditioner?
The braces would be required if the unit manufacturer.
The unit ma, okay.
Indicates that's the way to install it.
Okay.
So, there would be a lot of back and forth between the code enforcement officer. And again, the purpose of this is just to gain compliance, not to be punishing anyone.
And it's good to have guidelines for people when they're looking to install and seeing, like, what are you supposed to do, and jobs for your air conditioner, and we have that now.
Yeah, duct tape is not in this as a minimum standard.
Are we notifying landlords about this? Because like, I mean, personally, like, I have two air conditioners in the back of my apartment, and they were installed like 10 years ago. So how are we going to refine landlords of this, in case that nobody's watching, nobody's paying attention?
Well, they're going to, there's publications of the law, and then I'm sure that our trusted new mayor can put a notification, if it's passed, into his newsletter.
Newsletter, that's a good idea.
With help from the other trustees.
Okay, and then, yeah, sure, and then, you know, and then if the code enforcer comes, they'll be advised the first time, and it's not, like, it's not punitive. So it's like here, this is something new, and you have to fix this, please fix it, and assuming they fix it, that's it, that's the end of the conversation.
Was there any conversation, because I thought I had heard something about removing them during the winter, or is that like too much to ask people to do, because some people can't remove them, or can't, don't have places to store them?
It's not included in this draft of the law.
No, okay.
It is onerous in some cases.
Yeah, sometimes, yeah, because sometimes they don't have.
And as long as it's in place, and of course with the minimum standards, the, the safety of them in the winter weather, et cetera, is really fine. I mean, that's what the minimum standards are designed to do, is to withstand wind loads, et cetera.
I think that will take it to another level, because then they wouldn't have to consider about where to storage these units.
Absolutely, absolutely. I just wanted to bring it out to let people know that was considered.
No, we don't have the air conditioning police.
Okay.
And that's my point, they, they, they're going to be going to everybody's house, so notifying them and making them aware, it gives them the heads up that this is happening, because I can guarantee that there will be people that they will not know anything about this.
That's true, and if Ed sees it, you know, then he'll issue just a notice saying, please fix this. So, you know, everybody will be noticed when it's, I don't think of general notice to all landlords, because then they'll start getting to their individual tenants and raising the price on that.
I think that if you put it on the newsletter, and then it becomes, and we build awareness in the village, then people will know to look at what they currently have, and then prep for it.
Okay. Any other comments? The one from the public?
One public now.
So, can I have a motion to close?
You got one.
Oh, sorry.
Going once, going twice.
I'd like to be putting in front of way, I trust the county department understands what they're doing and why they're doing it, and I think it's a good idea to have a means by which if somebody has something that's not safe, the building inspector can say, you have to fix this. I think that's all this is, it sounds like a great idea.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patty.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing? Trustee Durazi is the second, Trustee Sullivan, all in favor. Public hearing is now closed. I would like to vote on this, so we can move it along. We, is there any discussion, any further discussion by anyone?
Nothing.
Okay.
Generally, you decide if there's impediments or not an impediment, and it doesn't appear from the crowds and the pitchforks that there's.
The crowds.
That there are impediments to moving this forward. Again, it just provides an opportunity for them to enforce, and not when somebody's stolen, say, hey, there's a brick, and it's coming loose.
Okay, so I'm just going to read what the legislative intent is of this proposal. I'm not going to read the entire law, but just the legislative intent. And I just want to read, "A local law adding a new section to housing standards, Chapter 204 of the Code of the Village of Dobbs Ferry, being enacted by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Dobbs Ferry as follows. Section 1, legislative intent. The village finds it necessary to require proper support and securment of window air conditioning units for the safety of the public. The purpose of this local law is to promote the public health, safety, and welfare of the Village of Dobbs Ferry, its residents and visitors by creating minimum standards for installation of air conditioning units in windows, and by providing an opportunity for enforcement of the standards for the protection of people and property which may be in danger from unsafe installation." And the law goes on to specify how the installation shall be performed. So, is there a motion to pass this local law? Trustee now, is there a second? Trustee Durazi, all in favor. Local law passes.
I have a resolution prepared, and I'll provide it to Liz, so she can, it just goes through the steps, and says that there's no apparent problem with moving forward, so I'll provide that to Liz.
Okay, great. Appointments. I'd like to consider a motion to appoint Ms. Linda Stutz as member of the library board for a term of five years, as recommended by the nominating committee. I don't think Ms. Stutz is here today, right?
She apologized for not being able to attend tonight, but I just was waiting all this time to say, we're so happy.
Step up to the microphone. Since you waited all this time, you'll have to step up.
No, they can't hear you.
They can't hear you.
They, the people.
Ms. Stutz, apologize for not being able to be here tonight, but on behalf of the library board and the library director, we're delighted to have her on this.
Okay, great. Is there a motion to appoint Ms. Linda Stutz? Trustee Sullivan, is there a second? Deputy Mayor Casal, all in favor? And that passes. So, give her her best, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry you had to wait, but thank you. Moving on to courtesy of the floor, is there anybody here for courtesy of the floor? Sure.
Good evening, I'm here for another.
Who are you? Who are you? Tell us your name.
Alicia Passman, I live at Seven Dollar Lane, I'm in four, I'm in the Harris Sustainability Task Force, and I just wanted to, we have an active month, and I wanted to mention a few things that are happening, so that you all are aware of what's happening. And February 4th, or tomorrow at HUDCO, we're having a, sponsoring an open house, information about our food scrap recycling drop-off site, the coming of curtside compost collection, all of the information about our energy efficiency campaign, Heat Smart, which I'll be talking about a little bit later, and also the CFA that's run by Roots and Wings. So how do we, so that's tomorrow, at 11:00, and it's open to the public. You can also, we've got a beautiful space. February 4th, we're inviting the community, anybody who wants to contribute, volunteer for sustainability initiatives in the village, to come out to Hudson Social at 7:30, and we'll let you know about some of the things that are happening in the village, and how you can contribute. February 10th, we have a Heat Smart information session, probably one at the last, because the campaign's ending at the end of March, so, but this will be one where all the contractors are present, you can learn about some of the new technologies that are energy efficient, and, and also ways to conserve energy in your home. So that's at the library on February 10.
Is that true, that everyone gets a free taco for showing up for that?
There are tacos from Comantio, yes.
Okay.
Make your own taco bar.
I was going to make that announcement, so, okay.
Yes, make your own taco bar, so please, come for that.
There's free ones tomorrow, too.
I didn't see that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yes, sorry, I should have mentioned that, that was big stuff.
If they leave with that.
And then finally, February 27th, there's a pollinator forum happening at South Presbyterian Church that the Task Force is helping to organize with the Conservation Advisory Board, and with Roots and Wings of South, and that is featuring local projects, partly through Adapa Park, actually, which has helped spurred some local community projects to build on the island, and Wal Grove, there's a park coming with pollinator native plants, pollinator friendly native plants, there's, as we know, the Dog Street Initiative, and then there's some other private houses where they have had wildflowers and native plants grow. You might have seen the one on Bellwood, have they going to Springhurst every day, with this riot of beauty. They'll tell you how to do it, and how they did it, and why they did it, to sort of help promote and save the pollinators under threat. So, that's February 27th, so I just wanted to let you all know.
You just took away all my announcements.
Anyway.
Thank you.
And so one other thing, which I was going to actually tack on to the Heat Smart request, later, but I'll talk about it. Here, Patty, if you want to come and help me with this.
I'm relieved you might help, but I'll stand next to you.
There's a, County Executive George Latimer is asking municipalities to join on to a recently issued grant to develop a new hazard mitigation plan, multi-jurisdiction, countywide hazard mitigation plan, and would like us to join the, on the STF. Think it's a great idea. I thought I would just, the concern is that the letter of intent has to be signed by Mayor Friskio and delivered by Friday.
Okay, great.
Actually, it's Thursday, I just want to.
Thursday, it has to maybe be in the mail. So, we, we actually just had our 2020 strategy session on Saturday, and decided that a climate resilience plan that includes hazard mitigation plan is essential. I mean, we don't have, yeah, critical, it's one of our main priorities this year, and this came across our transom, coincidentally, and, and we think it's a great idea, because it's, you're joining a county effort, we're part of this grant, and the state and the EPA recommend that municipalities join these countywide hazard mitigation plans.
Mayor, in actuality, and Elizabeth doesn't want to say that, I asked them to do it, because we don't have the bandwidth to do it.
Okay.
And they just jumped on board of it, and that's really good. It would be very, very good for our community to go in with the other communities, with the county, and do some work on that.
You'll see that I sign it before Thursday?
I'll see that you sign. We'll, we'll use a signature.
Okay.
Just give me your signature.
This is being recorded.
I know.
I was kidding.
She's kidding.
She's kidding.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Patty, sorry.
Is there anyone else for courtesy of the floor?
They're waiting so patiently.
I know, I feel bad.
So sorry.
But, okay, you're number one at least. So, we'd like to consider a motion to hire Mr. George Keeling as starting laborer effective February 1st, 2020, at an annual salary of $47,340, as recommended by the DPW General Foreman, Stephen Trezor. So, Mr. Trezor, do you mind coming up and tell us why you recommend Mr. Keeling?
Yes.
You waited all day for this, so.
This is your time to show.
Well, as you know, one of our lifetime employees is retiring, Thursday is his last day, Benny Ripley, that was retired 34 years, and all on purpose.
Wow.
So, I recommend that we have George Keeling replace him as a starter laborer at the back of the office. He has a CPO license, and he's a volunteer hiring, and he has all ties to go back to his current home.
Okay, sounds good. So, is there a motion to hire? Trustee Durazi, second, Deputy Mayor Casal, all in favor. Congratulations.
Welcome.
Just want to say thank you, Mayor, and four trustees for this opportunity. Lived here all my life, and I plan to stay. Been a firework for the last 10 years, and we've been there early 1900s, and I would love to serve the community even more.
Well, thank you. We appreciate your efforts and your service, so thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Shake our hands, come on, there you go. We won't do the follow-up.
We used to do that all the time. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Welcome.
Congratulations.
Bring it all back old school.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Part of your new job is you have to stay to the end of the meeting.
I think those are his parents with him.
That's true.
Thank you, Dr.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
I appreciate that picture, because it's like, recognize his first day, and his parents, and then, can you call him back in?
Patty, does he want to have a picture taken? You want to call him back in to see if he wants a picture taken?
In 30 years when he retires.
We need it, yeah.
In 30 years when he retires, he'll have his first day picture, right, the day he got hired.
Who's taking the picture?
I'll take it. It wasn't for us, it was for him.
It's okay, we decided we want a picture of all of us, I know.
No, I just thought it was nice for him.
So once you guys, your family, get your family.
I've been with the DPW for a really long time.
You're going to, you're going to need it for your retirement party.
Come on in. Come on in.
Get the parents.
We want the parents in here.
And Steve.
And Steve, Steve. Come on up.
Come on, come on.
Right here.
Do it for everything.
Steve?
You're an intuitive.
Go to the middle, in the middle.
Hold on.
Tell people Benji knees, there you go.
I just want to say I had a great pleasure of coaching George.
Wow.
And he was one of the best football players I have ever known, and I'm sure who played for the Bears.
Can't wait to see him tackle that garbage.
You watch those old films, and you see George picking up locks off the corner, and one of the reasons we had such a good, good record, 47-2 over those four years, because he knows how to display, and hard work.
Great. Item number two, consider a motion authorizing the village administrator to enter into an agreement with Hilton Gardens of Dobbs Ferry to host the Westchester Municipal Officials' Dinner around February 13th, 2020, at a cost not to exceed $6,000. Charlene, you want to expand upon that a little bit?
The Westchester Municipal Officials' Association has a dinner every month, and it's all the communities throughout Westchester. So that means that every five years, someone gets the honor. This month, February, is our honor, Patty, and we're having it at the Hilton. The subject matter is going to be sewers.
Fascinating.
And Mike Kaplowitz will be the speaker. He now works for the county in the Department of Environmental, I don't know where there's control, but he does environment, and he does specifically water. He was a former county legislator who was in charge of the Committee on Environment, so he's very knowledgeable. And as you may know, the county executive is exploring the consolidation of the county years. And in the meantime, what we're doing, and that will be the next issue, explore a sewer fund, which will be something that we can use for the maintenance and repair of the sewers. It will not be in the, in our budget, and it will be, the costs will be distributed amongst all residents and property owners, not-for-profit and for-profit and residential. So we'll get a wider berth for the repair of sewers. We have an aging sewer system, there's no question about it. But this is in the exploration stage. So I got rest from, or the party, but they do have an association with each other.
Okay, is there a motion regarding this Hilton Gardens in agreement?
It's a good price, too.
Right.
It is a killer of a price.
For how many people, how many people?
75 to 100.
Wow, okay. Trustee now, second, Deputy Mayor Casal, all in favor. Okay, that passes.
Nice negotiation.
It leads right into your next.
Consider a motion authorizing the village administrator to enter into an agreement with Alexander Betke of Brown and Weinroth to explore the requirements and methods to set up a sewer fund, and to assist the village with implementing the agreement with SUEZ. Do you have anything further to add to that? Charlene?
This is part, we're part of a consortium now of Hastings and Oarsley and Tuckahoe, Tuckahoe doesn't really count, but Hastings and Oarsley, in exploring the sewer fund. Mr. Betke was responsible for the shepherding of the law through the Senate and Assembly, the State Senate and Assembly, in order for us to acquire the use. the state Senate and Assembly, in order for us to acquire the usage of our residents from SUEZ. Prior to that, we would have had to pay them for it. Now we signed a confidentiality agreement stating that under penalty of no water, I guess, we might say, you know, what the usage is.
That's funny. Okay. Is there a motion? Trustee DeRazi, is there a second? Trustee Sullivan, all in favor? That motion passes.
Mayor, for these sewers.
Consider a motion to accept the village justice court statement of cash receipts, cash dispersments, and cash balances for the fiscal year ending May 31st, 2019. Jeff, can you speak about that?
This is an annual requirement that the board needs to audit the justice court. So we've hired the CPA firm to complete that audit, and we're recommending that you accept that audit.
Okay, is there a motion for that? Trustee, now?
Yes.
Is there a second on that, deputy mayor Casal?
Sure, why not?
All in favor? That passes. Consider a motion to approve audits numbers three, numbers four, for January 2020, as recommended by the village treasurer. Jeff, can you speak about that?
If there's questions, I can answer them. I have no additional
This is just a normal procedure.
This is, we've done this for a while now, yeah.
Okay. Is there a motion? Trustee DeRazi, second, trustee now, all in favor? That passes. Consider a motion to approve a request from Ms. Alyssa Fassman, Sustainability Task Force Chair, to place Heat Smart yard signs on village residences until March 31st, 2020. So I'm glad you brought the sign, and you know, we had a little bit of concern on how long they were going to be out, so talk about that and where they're going to be.
So this, this is the campaign that, as you know, we signed on to with Hastings, and it ends at the end of March. The signs are, I mean, the entire purpose of the campaign is really educational.
As they, actually, they get afterwards, just because the spring is coming and
Right. Good point.
Yes.
That was great.
Yes, thank you. Somebody's listening.
Is there, is there a motion? Trustee, now, second, deputy mayor Casal, all in favor? That passes. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Consider a motion to approve a request from Mr. William Florin, commander, American Legion Post 1048, to hold two flea markets at Waterfront Park on April 19th, 2020, with a rain date of April 26, 2020, and a, and on September 13th, 2020, with a rain date of September 20th, 2020. Is there a motion for that? Trustee Casal, second, trustee DeRazi, discussion?
Discussion.
Go ahead.
Besta, in September, October. It's usually October, though.
Best is October.
Haven't set a date, though. Just wanted, but I don't think it's conflicting, because I think it's usually in October, first weekend of October.
I think we're October 3rd.
See, they usually last weekend in September, the first
First Saturday is normal, and we confirm there are no, there is, I can't, there's no way we say it right.
It's a Jewish following.
Right, but it's, I've been advised by Rob Aaron that it is not a high holy day, so there's not an issue. We can do without October 3rd.
Okay, so that was a good point. So, all in favor? All, okay, that passes. Consider a motion to approve a request from the Girl Scouts to sell cookies at the Dobbs Ferry train station, starting on March 6th, 2020, and ending on May 8th, 2020, on weekdays from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Is there anyone here who wants to speak about that?
Yummy.
Okay. Is there a motion? Trustee, now, second, deputy mayor Casal, any discussion? All in favor? That passes.
Make sure to go buy cookies.
Okay, the minutes from January 14th, which are pretty long. Does anyone have any concerns or questions or problems with those minutes? Okay, since there aren't any, I would make a motion to accept the minutes for the January 14th, 2020 meeting, as true and correct. Is there a motion? Trustee, now, second, trustee DeRazi, second, I mean, all in favor?
I'm abstaining.
That's right, you have to abstain, right?
I don't have to, but I choose to.
Okay. She chooses.
Or at least, or at least have, you can approve minutes even if you weren't at the minute meeting, but I prefer not to.
Because there's no statutory requirement for you to actively approve minutes, therefore there's no prohibition against you voting.
You know, people should come more often to this meeting now that, you know, it's becoming so much fun. You're missing out.
Okay, do, 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 any trustees have any reports? Trustee, now. And you can combine the reports with the announcements, if you like, if you have any of those.
What are the differences?
Well, you're reporting on something that happened in the past, and you're announcing something that happens in the future.
I see.
What logic?
Um, I guess I can't.
Okay, trustee DeRazi?
Not before me.
Deputy mayor Casal?
Senior Valentine Party on the 14th, and we're still looking for volunteers for our CAB, Conservation Advisory Board, and our traffic committee. So if you're interested, go to the website and volunteer.
Trustee Sullivan?
I just want to commend the RFP department for being uber creative again, and it hasn't been a good winter for it, but they did create two ice skating rinks in Dobbs Ferry where you could bring your own skates and skate and pray for some cold weather, so maybe be able to open again this weekend. But their ingenuity never ceases to amaze me, and they're really making it a fun place to raise kids.
Yes, that's great. That's at Gould Park, correct?
It's at Gould Park and Memorial.
Okay.
It was super fun.
Oh, good.
Sorry, I missed it, but.
Didn't the Youth Services Council fund it up?
Yes, Youth Services Council did fund that. That's a good point.
Adults can skate there, too, Kim.
Anyone can skate there.
Okay.
I will not be a skating.
I have a number of announcements. Look, did I skip you, Don?
No, I did. I said the seniors.
Sorry. You're tired.
On February 8th, the Friends of the Library Valentine pop-up holiday sale will be from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. There will be books, CDs, DVDs, homemade baked goods, vintage baubles. Baubles, I knew I was gonna mess through that up. Plants and kids activities. For more information or to sign up, contact DFLfriends@gmail.com. The Greenberg Hebrew Center is hosting an annual blood drive to benefit the New York Blood Center on Sunday, February 2nd, 2020. I will reiterate, the Sustainable Dobbs Learn How You Can Volunteer on Sustainability Initiatives in the Village, which is February 4th, 2020, at Hudson Social at 7:30.
God bless you.
The South Presbyterian Church teens are having a teen benefit for Australia on February 8th at 7:00. It's $10 for teens and $35 for adults, and that benefits the terrible tragedy that's happened in Australia. Let's Taco About Heat Pumps.
Not my idea.
Pass it off. Sorry, didn't, Patty.
So I think it says here that not only will you get a free taco, a tree will be planted in honor of each attendee through one tree planted. So that's, for that alone, that's a great thing, right? So that's on February, that's a good question, where will it be? That's on February 10th, from 7:00 to 8:30 at the Dobbs Ferry Library. Donna already spoke about the senior citizens Valentine, the Valentine's Day Party. And again, I'll just reiterate that the Rivertowns Pollinator Forum, you can learn about five local pollinator projects and how you can support pollinators in your own garden. That's going to be at South Presbyterian Church at Dobbs Ferry on February 27th, 7:30. Just a report on Saturday, I went to this new business that opened up on Main Street, the Palace Yoga Meditation Center. I attended that. We did a ribbon cutting, and I also did some meditation, which was a great experience.
I saw the video. It was pretty impressive.
So
And I will say that that new business had given out free passes to every holiday hustle runner, too.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so they've already been generous to the community.
So that's a new business that we'd like to welcome to Dobbs Ferry. There being no other business, I would just
6:30 p.m.?
Oh, yeah. So, and that was only in red, right?
[laughing]
I'd just like to note again that effective today, the Board of Trustees' regular meetings will start at 6:30. The Board of Trustees is also instituting a public invited work sessions. The work sessions will provide the Board of Trustees an opportunity to discuss and review ongoing and new business items that are not ready for the regular agenda. It is expected that the work sessions will be held on the same night as the regular meetings of the Board of Trustees. Please be sure to monitor the village's website for details concerning the agenda. And tonight, we have on the agenda a work session, which we will do immediately following this meeting, regarding an RFP that we have for the comprehensive village plan. And I think, Charlene, you wanted to add
Valet parking.
Valet parking to the work session as well. So we will do that. So let me close this meeting, correct?
You can't close. You have to wait till after the work session.
So we just flip a switch and go right into the work session?
Slow right in.
Okay.
Do we do it from here, or do we sit around and round game?
This isn't convenient, really. Set up, is it?
It's the first time. What are we gonna do? We moved down there, right?
Yeah, there's no place to move down, so.
Tell Patty the public, but Patty's invited.
We just have to pay for it.
No, it's okay. All right, so let's do the work session.
And Liz is not taping, correct?
No. I don't think we taped it.
No. You don't tape work sessions.
Right. Liz, you can now
I wonder where Liz was.
Stop recording the work session.
Yeah, it's up to the board.
Goodnight, Dobbs Ferry. Okay, so let's talk about the RFP, the finalization for the comprehensive plan.
Can we start with the other one, because Michelle's here?
Oh, sure.
No, I, oh, it's got coming soon.